No, Garrett? Yes. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Welcome to the Clinton School Committee meeting, high school. How do you get a motion to approve the bills?
Don't move Mr. Chairman.
No, I have a second.
Second?
Motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor? And how about a motion to approve the minutes from the October 19th meeting?
So moved. Second Mr. Chairman.
Any discussion on the minutes? There being none, all those in favor? Unanimous? We have a student rep this evening?
No student rep.
No student rep. Kelly, we have PTA tonight?
Good evening. Hi.
Good evening. Kelly?
Our PTA meeting was scheduled for this coming Thursday and due to conflict in the schedule at the elementary school, we're moving it to the following Thursday, the 19th. I believe that Laurie McDermott's group, CCAC, is having an early childhood night there. And I'm not exactly sure about the exact name of it, but they will be there from 6:30 on and we don't want to compete with something that's going on there. And we don't have anything else at this point. And then our sped pack meeting, we just had this past Tuesday night and we had a guest speaker that was a child advocate and it went very well and she had some great pointers for our parents, for advocating for their children. And our next sped pack meeting is December 1st and we'll have a fireman there that will talk about what to do in emergency situations with kids that are with special needs. And I'll have more information when I get it for a flyer for him. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, guys.
Anything from the CTA this evening?
No.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Under action items, retirement, and I won't read the entire letter, but this one is from Mary Beth Torini, who has been a longtime paraprofessional, excuse me, instructional assistant at Clinton High School. And she will be retiring on December 31, 2015. She said, "Working with Clinton High School students and staff has been a highly fulfilling experience for me and I'm grateful to have had the opportunity." So Mary Beth Torini will be leaving us at the end of the calendar year. And that's the only retirement at the moment. As to resignations, we have two. The first one is from Steve Bressero. Steve is a newer teacher, grade three, at the Clinton Elementary School. And he talked to Mr. Rulo and he said, "Due to personal circumstances," that he felt the need to resign. And he's doing so for Friday, November 13. So we've already posted that position. And Steve wasn't with us for a long time and we thought he had, you know, a future with us, but due to circumstances, which he didn't really explain, he is resigning. And someone who was with us for a very long time, Megan McGurk, she's a preschool teacher at Clinton Elementary School. She will be resigning due at the end of the month, November 25, 2015. She's accepted a position as early elementary special education coordinator for the Gardner Public Schools. This is Megan Weeks, you probably know her as, and she's been with us for, I'd say, at least 10 years, maybe 15. And so we will certainly miss Megan. So those are the two resignations. And now we have two leave of absences, both due to maternity. Felicia Neely, physical education and health teacher, would be leaving us on or before December 2nd and would be out for the rest of the academic school year, hopefully be back in September. And then Jacqueline Nanoff, who is the middle school Spanish teacher, grades four to eight. She's expecting her second child on December 22nd and she's looking for leave from that date for the rest of the school year and also hopefully returning to us in September. So a lot of movement and a lot of things going on. What are the wishes of the board? Is anything?
I think we don't need to approve that. I wish them all good luck in whatever endeavors they have. And obviously, the ones that leave of absence, good luck as well.
All right. Thank you. Next up, number four is the donation. And Anne Marie, you want to talk about it or you want me to just handle it?
I'll do it.
All right. Recently, Mrs. Sargent and guidance person, Ms. Bevallacqua, came to me about a late bus. And I know we haven't had a late bus in a long, long time and it's not part of the bus contract. We used to have late buses at almost every one of our schools and we just haven't been able to do it. But, you know, the middle school is starting to get more and more after-school programs and, of course, they want the students to stay for extra help, that the teachers are, of course, willing to provide. And so they came to me wondering about money and I was lucky enough to remember someone who had offered some money exactly for that purpose of a late bus, probably two years ago, and then it kind of just fizzled out. So it's in your packet now, but Joel Frisch, who is, I believe, chairman of the Clinton Home Foundation, his group met and they have awarded the Clinton Middle School $2,250 as kind of a trial run for the late bus. That late bus would be three times a week, I think Monday, Wednesday, Thursday, at 4 o'clock. And that would help any students who are taking after-school classes or extra help. This $2,250, the copy of the check is in your packet as well, is just to see how it's going to go. This would take us through the end of January and we'll see how much it's used. And obviously, we, the Clinton Home Foundation knows of our interest, but if we don't have enough students participating, then the donation will end right there at 2,250. If there is a lot of interest, they seem to be willing to extend it, you know, probably through early June. So knowing our laws here and all, you guys have to officially accept the $2,250 from the Clinton Home Foundation for the middle school late bus.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion. We accept this. We can discuss the motion.
Motion's been made. I'll second. Any discussion?
So this is just a temporary thing right now?
We just want to see how it works. So it'll start immediately or next week?
As soon as it's voted on, we'll start on Monday or September.
And if it's productive, we could potentially get more money from that group.
Yes, yes. The buses, we checked, I think, is it $90 a day?
It's cheaper to do it for the drop train.
Yes, yes.
Can the high school utilize the bus as well?
We talked about that and we think that might be a possibility depending upon, I mean, it has to be 4 o'clock. So I don't know if things here, if kids are getting out at 4 or something, then I don't see why they couldn't hop on the bus. Remember, this is not a, this is a late bus, so there's not many stops. There's probably five stops in the entire town. So there's definitely some walking to do. But at least we have this thing going. So it's meant for middle school. Certainly, I think if we worked out something with the high school, you know, we could. But, you know, like basketball practices probably aren't getting out as early as 4 o'clock, I would doubt. And in here, a lot of students, of course, have a ride or they know somebody with a car. But we certainly wouldn't kick a high school kid off the bus, I don't think, if they came over.
Right.
I hope it's a successful pilot and that'd be great. And it's great to see kids more involved with the school and, obviously, the ones, hopefully, some of them are getting academic support as well. It's a win-win.
Is there any way we can get an update, like how many kids are using that bus, like on a monthly basis?
We are going to collect down on that.
Okay. That'd be good.
Okay. That's great.
So maybe the next meeting or the one after that, maybe you could at least tell us how many students on average are using the bus or that kind of thing.
That'd be good.
And you let all the students know, so you've been communicating with the students that this is coming, perhaps?
Well, since it's approved tonight, it'll be on the, it'll be on a connective, but it'll also go home and fly or inform students on the morning.
Great.
So is this mostly for, like, staying after school to get extra help or is it, what other programs are they going to be using?
Our number one goal is for the extra help. And then from the time that they leave their teacher till 4 o'clock, the students will come down to the cafeteria. And Mr. Dawkins, Ms. Bevallacqua, and I will alternate the day and they'll commit into homework.
Okay, good.
So they'll have time to work on homework and go to the last bus.
Sounds good.
Well, one bus, yes.
It's a great, it's a community partnership. Please extend our thanks to Mr. Frisch and the organization for offering this.
Sounds great. Keep our fingers crossed that it's meets everybody's expectations and the kids.
We have to pass the motion.
Yes, we do. So we need a vote to pass? All those in favor? Unanimous?
Thank you. The next request, I would seek to table that, only because now you, I believe you have the reasoning, the rationale behind it. But we're trying to see if there's some alternative things that we could do instead of spending the money. And we do that anyway, but, so I'd like to delay this. But certainly, we'll give you more information on this next time, but please take a chance to read this, read about the issue that we're facing right now. And then hopefully in two weeks, we'll give you more information and then make a formal recommendation, more than likely where you will probably need this person and we'll be asking you to add a new staff member.
Understandable.
You need a vote to table that or not?
Entertaining.
There's nothing to table.
We didn't even discuss it.
No, okay. Great. All right, Karen, it's in your packet. She's done quite a bit of work on the finances. Karen, you want to come forward and take us through this quickly?
I decided to get it all over in one night. So I've got your end-of-year budget report and then I've got your first quarter budget report. Okay. What I'd like to do is read my notes and then if you have any questions on it, then feel free to ask me, okay?
Yep, sure. This is for the end-of-year budget report for FY '15. I'm pleased to announce that we ended FY '15 with a balanced budget and were able to keep some well-needed reserves in some of the revolving accounts. How were we able to balance the budget? With good use of grants, revolving funds, and monitoring of the budget. Expenditures through 6:30 totaled $19,000, $19,83,480, which is 100% of the total FY '15 budget. Of this total expenditure, 12% was allocated to district-wide expenses, 15% to the elementary school, 15% to the middle school, 15% to the high school, and 33% to special education, 9% to vocational schools. The salaries totaled $12,588,170, which was 66% of the total expenditures. And the expenses were $6,495,310, 34%. The summary of the expenditures by the Department of Education accounts for the end-of-year report, district leadership and administration were 2.1% of the expenditures. That included school committee, district administration, and finance and administrative services. Instructional services were 62%, which included district-wide academic leadership, school building leadership, instruction, teaching services, professional development, textbooks, instructional materials, general supplies, instructional technology, guidance, counseling, and testing services, and psychological services. Other school services were 9.4%. That included health services, transportation, athletics, and student activities. Operation and maintenance of plant, 7.3%, including custodial services, heating of buildings, utilities, telephone, maintenance of grounds, maintenance of buildings, maintenance of equipment, and network and communications. Employer retirement this year was zero. We did not have any expenses for that. Acquisition, improvement, and replacement of fixed assets was 0.3%, and that included just the copy machine leases. Our programs with other school districts, 18.8%, and that included the mass public school tuition, which included the vocational tuition, the private school tuition, and the collaborative tuition. As special needs, the circuit breaker reimbursement funds we received this fiscal year amounted to $815,537, in which we allocated all of that towards sped tuition. A review of the tuition accounts showed that we were just about on budget this year with the out-of-district tuition after the allocation of the circuit breaker funds. The mass public school tuition was 97.49% expended, private school tuition 99.95% expended, and collaborative tuition 97.40% expended. The circuit breaker reimbursement was based on FY '14 student count of 38 students. The reimbursement rate was 73.5%. The foundation budget was $41,408 per student. My future goal is to try to preserve some of this circuit breaker for unexpected costs. So this year, unfortunately, we did not have that luxury, but in the future, if there's a possibility, I'd like to start to get some reserves. That way, if we do have any unexpected funds in special education, we have a little bit of pot. You do have two years to spend those circuit breaker funds, but this year was not the year to be able to do that. Transportation, the town received the FY '15 homeless transportation reimbursement in the amount of $12,379. That was allocated against the homeless transportation expense, but unfortunately, we did not get any reimbursements from the state for vocational transportation this year. We did last year, but we did not get it this year. Grants, the district received over $1 million in grant monies during fiscal year '15 from various grants, including Title I, Title II, Title III, sped improvement, supplemental improvement, I mean supplemental support, inclusive preschool, preschool integration, academic support, quality full-day kindergarten, and early childhood program improvement. These funds were used to pay such expenses as salaries, professional development, mentors, technology, and supplies. The revolving funds, the district made good use of their revolving funds during FY '15. Some of the examples included the rental of facilities. We brought in over $46,000 worth of revenue to the district, which in turn was allocated against facilities expenses. The estimate for FY '16 for the rental revenue is about $57,000, of which that $57,000, $30,000 of it, we had to take from FY '16 budget that we were originally prepared and that's going to go against the revolving. So luckily, we do have the $57,000, so we're pretty sure we have that money. The athletic revolving brought in over $59,000 worth of revenue to the district, which, again, was used towards the athletic expenses. The town was, luckily, we thanked the town for the articles that we received. We got articles for technology and books and with the general articles, we were able to buy over $250,000 worth of technology and books. Preschool tuition, this has been a problem area in the past and we're working hard to keep the revenue coming in. We're sending delinquent letters out to parents, but we were able to cover all but $24,250 of preschool salaries, which had to be paid by the school choice funds. But this year, we're being even more forceful in our collection efforts. We've already begun to start sending out letters to parents and it has been very successful. We had one, a couple of parents that hadn't paid for last year. We sent out several letters and one was a full tuition that we did get all that money back in and said, "No, get it in. Your kid's not going to go to school, unfortunately." State Medicaid reimbursement, these funds go directly to the town, but the total that were brought in this year was $169,425. School choice, the beginning balance for school choice was $413,574. The revenue we received was $843,868, out of which we paid $1,628,02 for payroll and $102,435 for expenses, with an ending balance of $92,205. So it was an average count of 122 students for the year, but we ended the year with 115 students. So with the $92,205, your school choice funds are pretty much depleted and you won't have that luxury in the future to go to your school choice funds when you have them.
Which is what we predicted, remember, a couple of years ago?
Mm-hmm. It was pretty close to the estimate that we had at the beginning of the year. We were estimating we were going to keep about $100,000, but we were able to salvage about $92,205. The reason was I had to put money towards, because of the preschool tuition salaries. FY '16 salaries to be paid from the school choice totaled $757,621. So we're very lucky that the override passed as we're out of those excess funds and we were able to get some really key salaries into the general fund budget, you know, including a lot of technology we got back into the budget, which we would not have any funds to pay for them. So we thanked the town for, that override was very helpful. Another positive note is that Clinton's E-Rate funding is increasing. I'm not sure if you know what E-Rate funding is. E-Rate funding is a federal program in which you get money to pay towards technology. And this year, they had a reform of the E-Rate funding. In the past, they have two categories, category one and category two. Category one is where you have just your kind of telephone and internet. Category two is where you have your infrastructure expenses. And in the past, the only people that, towns and districts that were able to get the category two were the people that were really high level of free and reduced rate, like 80%. The rest were not able to get the funds. There wasn't enough money in there. But with the reform that they did, what they did was they're slowly cutting out the telephone and internet, so it's 20% each year, it's going down until it's depleted. So we need to keep that in mind when we do budgeting with the telephone. But they've guaranteed people infrastructure money. So this year, a review of the history of your E-Rate that you've had in the past, in the past five years, you averaged about $30,000 to $35,000 that you've got from E-Rate and that would go through, towards your internet and your telephone. And then for the fiscal year 2014-15, it jumped to $70,820 and it's continuing to increase. For the 2015-2016 funding year, Clinton has been approved for $196,595. And that is going towards category one, you've got phones, internet, and fiber lines for $62,928. Category two, you've got switch upgrades in the amount of $124,379. That money is, the E-Rate is paying 80% of your expenses for those. So it's a really good thing. And I have to give a nice judo to Kathy Fahy because she did the work and work with the consultants to get all these funds for us. And again, the E-Rate program is based on the student eligibility for the National School Lunch Program, Free and Reduced. The end-of-year budget, that's pretty much all I have for the end-of-year budget unless you guys have any questions.
I had a question. First of all, thank you very much for this. I have to say, this is probably the most detail that we have ever gotten, that I have ever gotten since I've sat on this board. But I just wanted to ask, on the vocational transportation that you said in the past we've received reimbursement for, is it a grant that we didn't get or?
No, the state did away with that. It was one of the cuts that they got.
Oh, I see.
It was a cut. Last year, we got like $80,000, but this year, we didn't get any.
Yes, okay. And am I understanding correctly that the special education circuit breaker is almost like a revolving account, but only for two years?
Yeah, when you get the money, you have two years to spend it, okay? So unfortunately, here at Clinton, because you've really had a need to spend it, you've been spending it all each year, okay? Now, with the budget that I did for FY '16, I tried to allocate in your budget a little less than the full circuit breaker that I was anticipating, to maybe see if we could try to start saving a little bit. Because, I mean, we all know special education costs, they're so volatile and if they come in and you don't have any money in the budget, then you're really stuck. So if you can at least try to build a little bit each year to get that pot, because you have the two years to spend it. And you can only use it on special education tuition.
Do you have a recommendation of what amount we should be trying to save?
I have tried in the past to keep a whole year's worth. Because, you know, then if you, think about if you get one residential student in, I mean.
Yeah, that's a good point.
It's like your money's gone and where are you going to get that money? This year, there was just no way you could do it. But next year, I'm hoping there's a possibility we might be able to get something in that reserve.
Is the grant, I know originally when full-day kindergarten came to be, that there were grant monies available and I know through the years, it's less and less. But do we know where we stand as to how much full-day kindergarten costs us and, you know, how much we get reimbursed for?
The grant is about, I think it's like $85,000. But listserv, which is the Masseyville questions, it's already on there that people are not putting that in their budget for FY '17.
For reimbursement, yeah.
Remember, we almost lost it this year.
Yeah, we almost lost it this year.
Did we ever look at ways, I know we don't want to anticipate this coming February, March in the painful season that we go through, but did we ever talk about, because I know for a while Clinton was one of the few towns that offered full-day kindergarten at no charge.
Yes, yep.
Did we ever look at having to charge for full-day?
Well, every year when I write the grant, you know, we think about it, but if we charge, if we charge anything, that comes sort of off the grant, so.
But now we're anticipating that there may not be any grant money.
There may not be a grant at all. That's true. But, I mean, this year, we were told that it wasn't going to happen and luckily, it did. But you're absolutely right, it's going to end soon enough. And the reason was, they were trying to get everyone to go full-time, you know, full-day K. And so they gave you money to go do it. Now, most schools are doing full-day K. It's almost like no need to be funding it. But again, when I started, it was, I think, $119,000 we were getting and now it's down to $85,000. And that was like just 10 years ago when I was writing that grant. It was, I think, pretty sure it was $119,000. So, you know, it's, and each year, as paraprofessional salaries go up, the amount of money seems to go down and so it's paying for less and less of our paras anyway. So, I mean, if the grant went away, we may very well have to maybe do some charging or whatever, just like we're talking about preschool and what we can do, but.
Do a lot of, I don't even know if, do a lot of other towns charge for full-day kindergarten still?
I'm not sure.
They do. The only problem with that is you just got to make sure because if you charge anything, then you don't get the reimbursement from the state. That's the problem with the preschool too, we're trying to determine that.
Oh, I see.
So you kind of have to look at that. But the kindergarten grant was put in place to try to help districts to build their kindergarten programs. So now I think they're thinking, oh, you got your programs and here we go, we're going to unfund this.
Now pay for it, yes.
But it's all the district managers that talk. But it's, all the district managers are talking like that's pretty much probably going to be gone. So they're not putting in the budget.
So conceivably, we could be faced with charging. We might have to supplement what we lose.
Or have a hybrid with full-day and half-day classes.
Those willing to pay for full-day.
Right.
Oh, I see.
And that seems to be the trend, that now that everyone's gone full, some are backing off that. And, you know, some parents are saying, you know, I really don't want my child to have full, you know, full. I'd rather have a half-day. So that's something that we've talked about, but we haven't done it yet. But it could be that we go with that model, where there's so many fulls, and we offer some halves too. Some children, that's all they can do, and that's all their parents want them to do.
Wasn't the reason we went the full-day was because we kind of all agreed that even if they didn't get a full-day kindergarten, they're really behind in first grade when it got there? So it's kind of like, if we don't do another, they're behind in first grade, and now that kind of self, it's kind of self-defeating, so we have to think that through.
If you look at a kindergarten day, by the time they take their jackets off and get their snacks and put their jackets on, on a half-day, they don't really have any time to do anything. So I mean, the full-day is, as you pointed out, I mean, academically, that's why we did it, because I think we subtract all the things that little kids have to do to get ready to go out and do things, which is very strong. The full-day is really, and I think it's been pretty effective. I think it's, I think it's one of the things that's at the elementary school to tame, is to have it to tame. You know, I don't know which out. So be shamed. So hopefully.
Yes.
Hopefully, that's why I found it. Well, they're looking at chapter 72. They had that article in the paper recently, so.
Well, it's due. It's due for an overhaul. Hopefully, they'll deal with some vision. Thank you very much. I.
I just wanted to go over, one more thing. I'm sorry. I just wanted to go over the school choice numbers again and make sure that we're all clear, or at least I'm clear on it. So the revenue in FY15, I know we dropped about seven kids, I think you said. But the revenue that we can expect in FY16, did you say you're expecting about the same, around 800,000?
Certainly, one of the things that hurt us with school choice was, I think we had maybe 13 school choice seniors graduate in June. It was a really high number. It was a small class, but a high percentage of them were school choice students, including the number one valedictorian was from Sterling. So, you know, but I think those numbers have gone down, but.
We started the year with, according to the Department of Ed's report, we started the year with about 129,000, and then it ended up with 115,000. But when we did the budgeting, I think we, I think I budgeted for like 113,000. But we're not at that yet. So, excuse me, the anticipated amount of money for.
So in other words, I think what you're saying is, when we look at next year's budget, because we have 92,000 left in there, and last year, we started with over 400,000. So we're looking at a $300,000 deficit to our general fund budget. Just to make up for that. If the revenue, if the revenue is the same, 800,000 or so thousand.
But that's, what you're saying is part of the reason why we needed the override. So like when we did, like, I'll give you an example for this year. The school choice expenses, 102,000. We put a lot of those expenses into the general fund, which is why the general fund was going up. Because a lot of these expenses here in school choice, we knew weren't going to be able to fund by school choice, so we had to somehow get them in the general fund. Also, the payroll, we had to take some of those salaries out of school choice, because we couldn't do away some of these key, like, the director of technology is in school choice. You can't, you can't have a school without the director of technology. So a lot of those, not a lot, some of those expenses were already put in the general fund, so they're in there already. So that's going to be a savior for summer.
So this comes, so FY17.
Well, that's FY16.
16.
So when we do FY17.
Next year.
Right. The hope is to try to get a little bit more of that in, so that you're not all relying on school choice.
So eventually, school choice is just going to be in and out. In other words, we're, whatever we anticipate, 113,000 or whatever children times what we get, we're going to anticipate spending that and netting that out every year.
Right. That's all you're going to be able to do. And with the hopes of trying to, at least try to get maybe a salary or two out each year, if it's possible, because, you know, you really do have a lot of key salaries in there. I mean.
Remember, we had, what, 13 salaries, I think.
We had a lot of them all here, but we have teachers. We have, let's see, we have a couple of sped teachers. We had the regular teachers. You had the director of technology in there. You had your virtual high school in there. Actually, the entire technology budget was in school choice. So with this new budget, with the override, we were able to put all the technology salaries out of school choice and into the general fund budget, which is great. We were able to put pretty much the complete technology, all their budget items that were paid in school choice, we were able to put in the general fund, because there was going to be no money there. And then next year, hopefully, we can try to get some more of these out, because you've got, you know, several, a lot of teachers and the librarians in there, so.
So it's going to be balancing. Basically, you've got to watch it and start move shift keeping things out so we don't.
So that's why that override was so important.
Teacher buyback, the retirees, was always contingent on us having school choice money at the end of it all. But now, that's in the budget too. So we're, I think we're sending those out probably this week or next week.
Yeah, next payroll.
And there'll be no more, you know, the entire amount, we just can't do anymore, which is what we had done all the way up to, I think, two years ago. So now, it's, you know, people that we didn't pay last year, you know, they're getting two-thirds soon. And people who just left in June will get their one-third. And that's how it'll just keep going until people are kind of grandfathered through. But at least it's in the budget now.
So that's why when people, with the override, a lot of that money was just trying to keep the status quo. So now, it's, when we look at these reports now, then you can see what was happening. It was kind of hard to see it before, but now, right, now that you, now you can kind of see what's happening. And so it was wonderful to get, I mean, to get the technology department in your general fund budget was, you know, great, great to get that in there. I mean, Kathy Fahy's happy. I do have a really short first-quarter budget update, because the first quarter, obviously, doesn't say too much, because we just started school, it's only through 9:30. The expenditures to 9:30 totaled 2,241,312 of the total FY16 budget of 20,751,404. It represents 11% of the total budget of this total expenditure. 18% was allocated to district-wide expenses, 13% to the elementary, 14 the middle school, 14 the high school, 41% to special education, and they have not been expenditures yet to the vocational school. Although sped, the special education seems to be a high percentage. It's far too early to read anything into that. And for an example, our special education transportation invoices have, they've already come into the district, and some have already paid, where the vocational and the regular ed transportation have not come in. They weren't in by then. So that would make it kind of deceiving. Our special education tuition invoices had already started to come in. And also, special education bought a lot of their testing and supplies upfront. So they kind of got a lot of there for the whole year upfront. And the salaries were 60%, 40%? Salary 60% expenses, 40%? The circuit breaker, again, I already went over. We're going to be receiving 843,484, which we have received 210,871 with the first-quarter payment. The circuit breaker is up 27,947 over last year. And the other thing, I just wanted to tell you that we've begun an attempt to educate the individuals and to improve the monitoring of the budget. Reports for, this first-quarter report was distributed to the principals, the director of special education, director of technology, and the athletic directors. And they all got their own individual sheet with only their expenses and where they, what their budget is, how much they've spent, and how much they have remaining. We're going to try to update them throughout the year. My belief is that it takes a team effort to manage the budget, and these administrators should be given budget updates to assist them in monitoring their own budget and expenditures. And communication between them and myself is vital in to, you know, keep this budget monitored and try to stay within it. So that's what I have for.
Just an update on vocational is, we're at 103 now at ASABET, which is three over the minimum it can be. And all three of those were move-ins. They were students who have come in unexpectedly that were going either to ASABET or another vocational school. And that means automatically, state law is that they automatically go to the top of the list and go to the, our voc school. So we're 103. That's down considerably from the past. Again, because it's 25 per year, the minimum it can be is 100,000. And so that's not too bad. I think we budgeted for maybe 102,000, I think, something like that.
So why not?
That's great.
Not too bad. Does anybody have any further questions?
Good job. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Quick question, Mr. Chairman, but nothing to do with that, but it's kind of related to school choice. So are we monitoring that the kids that should be school choice come into the district or are school choice? Is there a mechanism for that?
How so?
Maybe at the sidebar later on, never mind. I'll talk about that later. We think about that question, I'll pose it. Yeah, never mind.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Robert?
Well, it's going to be a very short meeting. I know it's going to make the item very unhappy. So my understanding is that the Subcommittee for the School Nurse Team Leader doesn't really have any to report, so we can just take that off. The memorandum of understanding is back out to the lawyer. There have been updates to the proposed MOA, and so it's in their hands to review. Most of the issues seemingly were resolved. There was one issue of, which they had pointed out, where in one item, we were reviewing, and in the other end of the agreement, we were approving a budget item. And I pointed that out to them. I said, I don't know how important that is. I just want their opinion. And we got an explanation from Mr. Ward, which I sent on. You know, he explained why they hadn't changed it. We wanted to make sure it wasn't a mistake. He said, no, it wasn't a mistake. And he sent us his explanation, which was very thorough. And I sent that on to the lawyer, and I just said, you know, I'm just looking for their opinion on that. And I haven't heard back. I know they're working on it. And I think that's, that's all I had. I think I asked the superintendent about the Curriculum Committee, and he said he's going to get that in gear. So I guess we're going to have a meeting sooner rather than later, hopefully, so we actually.
Usually, the first one is in December, so.
Right, the first snowstorm, or?
Yeah, maybe.
Anybody have any other?
New, old?
I want to have Emory at some point come up and discuss the STEAM Fair, Science Fair, but I don't know if that's better for under public comments.
That would be fine under public comments.
Do you want to come up, Emory? Just briefly, give us an update on.
It's our favorite place to be.
Hi.
Hi.
How are you? So we had our kickoff on October 27th with NiPRA and with Mr. Morrison, the First Robotics Team. It was fabulous. It was all videotaped, and I know that Mr. Morrison's group is working on putting out a launch at some point. It will be made available for our website, so that parents can see what this is going to be all about. We met today to finalize some dates. So November 23rd, the students will have the opportunity to meet one more time and to pick up applications if they're interested. And right now, I think there's at least 20 to 30 groups of students interested in applications for this science fair. They'll be due December 23rd before we break for vacation. And my goal is to get everybody on the committee a copy of every application, so that they can have some very nice reading to do over the Christmas break. January 8th, we will report back to the applicants whether their project has been accepted for the upcoming STEAM Science Fair. And our goal is really to pretty much take everybody, if at all possible, and the applications that we feel we need to work with, we're going to bring in the groups and go over it with them and help them tweak it, so that it would be a project that would fit the criteria. And then we will also use Sam Rhodes' mentoring group, and we'll know which teams will need a little more mentoring and which ones will need less. And that late bus is going to be perfect for us, because we're going to allow the students to meet Mondays and Thursdays after school, because there will be transportation provided for them at home. So I'm pretty sure, Mr. Ngano, that we will fill the bus and be able to keep it till the end of the school year.
That'd be awesome. Sounds great.
And then, I did give you the wrong date for the STEAM Science Fair. It's March 10th, not the 16th, I think that I gave you. I started on my board today, after you left. It's a Thursday, and I believe it was March 10th. So we would love to have all of you attend.
Smart.
10th.
Is that here?
It'll be at the Clinton Middle School, in the gymnasium and part of the hallway. And we decided today, Ed and I, if we have to, we'll extend it into the cafeteria. We're not going to turn anybody away.
Like to not have to turn anyone away.
Yeah.
I just want to make, to extend our thanks to Mr. Morrison and to the US First and to George Martinez and NiPRA. We asked them to just come with the robot and like say a couple of words, and they went way above and beyond, did an awesome presentation. They had one of those GoPro cameras on the robot, and I guess they got some really great footage from the launch. And the goal is to kind of take a 45-minute event and like get it down to maybe about 10 or 15-minute video presentation. We'll show it to the kids again, and possibly maybe get it up on public access for, so like parents can see it and stuff too, just to continue to get the word out. Going good.
So thank you.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Morrison.
The students loved it, so that's the most.
And all, and the students, he had high school kids. They did a great job too, helping out.
Yeah, they really did.
They were great.
George is a singular asset to the town.
Yes, definitely.
He really is enthusiastic. He's been for so many years.
It was very well implemented, the assembly that day.
Thank you.
It was great. So thank you to everybody.
His son's going to be helping with US First. His son's going to be involved also too with the meeting.
Yes, yes. He was there as well.
Generation, generation.
Thank you to Mr. DeVoe too, because he's not letting us drop this.
That's good. That's good.
So it is a good thing. We're excited for it.
Well done. Thank you, Emory.
Robert, just a quick announcement, I guess, for, this is public comment. The next meeting, all of you were, have an invitation, I think, in front of you. But, so the next meeting of the school committee is Monday, November 23rd. But at 6:15, there'll be pizza in the cafeteria, and then we'll gather in here for the awards ceremony that we do.
We'll be eating his pizza.
Do we need to order extra? Is that what you're saying?
No. He managed to forget that we were actually serving. Such a rare treat.
Showed up late to the last free food.
Oh, okay.
We'll all be comforting his food, so. All right, that's good to know. And any public comment?
Mr. Chairman, John Martin, 28 Orange Street. You may have read in the telegraph recently about open meeting law and a requirement that boards will, at reasonable interviews, intervals, excuse me, review the minutes of their executive sessions to determine. sessions to determine if the provisions of the section warrant continued non-disclosure. So, what I'd ask you to do is go back through your executive session minutes, review them, determine if they still need to be non-disclosed, and if they don't, please, if you would, post them on your website, that might make the item's job a little bit better, or the item might be a little bit happier tonight.
She's always happy.
And it also, the, the section of the open meeting law also states that you're supposed to announce that open session, like, yes, you reviewed the executive session minutes, and, um, you have to include it in the minutes as well. It's in the open meeting law, it's Fair Rap G1 across Section 11. So, if you would, you may want to consider adding that here.
All right, I don't think we've had one for a while, I don't know if we have.
No, I don't think there's too many that left, that we haven't done.
I think there's probably only five of them that haven't been reviewed, but I'd be happy to support you guys.
Okay, yeah, it's been a while, so. Thank you. Anybody else? Mr. Rillo?
Just public comment, I was at the Bar City Girls Cheer Competition this last weekend. Your girls came in and won the middle league leagues this weekend, so congratulations to them, they will be competing in Leominster this upcoming weekend for the, for the districts. So I believe it's going to force a good time, the girls have won that.
That's awesome, yeah.
So they've done a nice job, and they really just demonstrate that their sport, not just a pass on. So congratulations to them there, they're very good at what they do, and they're even better, matter of fact, at giving a lot of energy to everybody else that's there. So great opportunity and great thing.
Awesome. Anybody else?
Yeah, Paul Morrison, First Advisor. This past Thursday, we kicked off our twenty-fifth season of the robotics program with our fantastic partner, NiP Pro Gable. Got a lot of great events planned for the year, we're in the process of producing a twenty-five year yearbook, reaching out to all the past members, and some other things coming down the road, but just to let the committee know that it's, it's a big year for us, we're one of, I think, three teams still with their original partners in this program.
Wow.
Quite something that's happened for twenty-five years, certainly, in public schools.
I, I have, have been on the committee long enough that I've, not twenty-five years, but I've been long enough that, that one of the highlights for me of US First is when the students get up and they run the presentation evening, and, and a lot of these students have really not had much public speaking experience, and they really knock it out of the park, and, and I remember very fondly one student, I think, I think she was a weeks, I don't know, but, but I remember her getting up and, and what she said was that it was the first time that she understood what math was all about, that she, she got it when she became part of US First. And I think she ended up going to MIT and going out to the West Coast to get a.
University of California, first.
Yeah.
She just responded to our inquiries.
And, but, out of the park, and I, I think that it was, it was such a terrific speech, because I don't remember what happened yesterday, but I remember her getting up and, and saying that, and, and I think that one of the things about US First, and I think it was the purpose really, was to, to get kids involved and, and show the purpose for, for what they're learning, and, and that hands-on experience for her, obviously opened up her future. And I've, I've heard it over and over again at these presentations, and these kids get up there, so I, you know, as much as the, the robot is a lot of fun to watch and the competitions, and, you know, my son was involved, so it was fun to see it, but I think at the end, when they actually explain what goes on and what, and what it's meant to them, and the mentoring that goes on, I, it's, it's an unbelievable program. It's one, I think it's one of the biggest successes that we have, and to get kids involved in engineering, obviously, is a, is a key, key asset for them, so, anyway. Anything we can do to help you celebrate your, your twenty-fifth? I mean, I think it's, it's really one of those things that more and more people have heard about it now, but it was, it was kind of a hidden gem for a while, but it's, it's pretty visible now. Anybody else have anything? Yeah?
Clinton Middle School held their fifth annual Harvest Craft Festival on Saturday. We had a great day, so I want to thank my staff and my student ambassadors for just a wonderful event, we did very well, we had a great turnout, people were coming in and out, the basket raffles alone brought in some very good money, and that's due to the staff and the students, you know, coming up with the ideas, and then we raffle them off as part of the event, so our fifth annual is done, and we're getting ready for our sixth annual.
Awesome. I, I got this, I'm sure we all got this, but from the town of Sterling, from the Sterling Fair Committee, and they wanted to thank you for the privilege of allowing the Clinton High School marching band to participate. Special thank you to Kate, I'm going to massacre.
Meford.
Meford, for professionalism and dedication to the youth of Clinton, and we can take pride in knowing it's become a great part of our fair, and they look forward to the school's participation in the future, and, anyway, it was a nice little note to get. Appreciation. Anybody have anything else? A motion to adjourn?
So moved.
I'll second it.
Have a nice evening.